The city is hosting an open house and job fair from 10 a.m. to 7 p.m. at the Rocky Mount Event Center, and this event is ideal for residents who are looking for new career opportunities or seeking to expand their professional network. As we've stated, there will be prize drawings as well as employment opportunities. Also would like to share tonight, the Juneteenth Community Empowerment Festival takes place this downtown, this weekend, and so we have a video highlight that we'd like to share this evening.
The Juneteenth Community Empowerment Festival in downtown Rocky Mount runs for three exciting days, June 16 through the 18th. Come out and be entertained, inspired, and empowered by an impressive lineup of performers, speakers, vendors, and more. The first night kicks off with a block party featuring the Earthwomen Empire Tribute Band. On Saturday, more music, headlined by Mr. John Fox and Marcus Anderson. And Sunday is a full day of praise and gospel music, headlined by Luther Barnes and Heather Towne Walker. Get the full list of details at downtownrockymount.com.
And finally tonight, I would like to remind everyone that the next downtown live will be happening on Thursday, June 22nd, on the lawn at the Imperial Center, and it begins at 6 p.m. and this month's band will be North Tower. Thank you, Mayor. That concludes my announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Anybody have any comments or questions for our manager? Okay, moving right along, we'll come on to presentation of Lions Club Police Officer and Firefighter of the Year Planks and Checks. Okay.
Good evening.
There you go. Yes, sir. There you go.
Thank you for the opportunity of coming and fellow citizens of Rocky Mount. I'm Dr. Bob Cameron. I am president of the Rocky Mount Lions Club, and every year for the past, and I'm sorry, I don't actually know how many years, something over 30 years, I believe it is, the Rocky Mount Lions Club has presented a Police Officer of the Year and Firefighter of the Year Award. These awards are nominated by their departments and voted on by all their peers. So this is not something that, sorry chiefs, but the upper brass go through and say, we're going to pick this one, but they are voted by all their peers and elected as the Firefighter of the Year and Police Officer of the Year. So it is my great honor to ask Fire Chief Drury and firefighter Charles Spruill and his wife to come forward. So Chief Drury, if you want to make a few remarks?
I can't say enough about the accomplishments of Captain Spruill. He's an outstanding employee. He's a dedicated individual who frequently articulates and reinforces the values of our department. He's an outstanding employee overall. He's a role model for others to follow, and congratulations, Captain Spruill.
We have a letter from the Lions, Captain Charles Spruill. On behalf of the Rocky Mount Lions Club, I want to congratulate you on being selected as Firefighter of the Year. Your selection demonstrates the high esteem in which you are held by your peers. As citizens, too often we fail to recognize the protection and services that you provide. Rocky Mount is lucky to have dedicated professionals like you in our fire department. We thank you for choosing service to the community as your profession. There is no way we can compensate you for the risk you take on our behalf, but I hope this small token of our appreciation will let you know that you have our thanks and support. And I'm going to let the chief present the questions. Chief Hassel and Corporal William Mayfield and his wife are here. Again, congratulations Corporal Mayfield, and on behalf of the Rocky Mount Lions Club, I want to congratulate you on being selected as the Police Officer of the Year. Your selection demonstrates the high esteem in which you are held by your peers. As citizens, too often, we do not recognize the protection services that you provide. Rocky Mount is lucky to have dedicated professionals like you in our police department. We thank you for choosing service to the community as your profession. This in no way compensates you for the risk you take on our behalf, but we hope this small token of our appreciation will let you know that you have our thanks and our support. Chief Hassel, you want to say?
Thank you, Dr. Cameron. There's a lot I could say about Corporal Mayfield, but I would let the citizens that are here know that he is a 16-year veteran of the Rocky Mount Police Department, and it was no surprise to me for him to be selected by his peers as a 2022-23 Officer of the Year. As a corporal within our agency, you know, officers, you know, they have the formal rank structure, sergeants, lieutenants, and up, but it's those corporals like Corporal Mayfield that many of our officers look up to and they go to for guidance when they need help. And for me, as a chief, Officer Mayfield exemplifies our core values, which we expect from all of our officers: fairness, integrity, respect, and the utmost professionalism for every citizen and those who visit our great city deserve. So I also thank you for not only your service, but for being recognized as Officer of the Year.
Dr. Cameron, I want to thank you and the Lions Club for coming here tonight, celebrating our law enforcement and first, you know, empowerment as well. So again, Captain Spruill and Corporal Mayfield, congratulations on the distinct honor tonight. That brings us to number eight on our agenda, which is our petitions to be received from the public. And so the public petitions portion of the City Council meeting is an opportunity for public comment, and the City Council appreciates your attendance and thanks you for expressing your views and opinions. The City Council values all citizen input, and this is an opportunity to raise a question or present a request to council. However, in most cases, council members will not respond to public comments, but may refer a matter to the city manager or staff for follow-up. Time will be monitored in order to give everyone an opportunity to speak, and speakers will have three minutes. Please be aware that sign-in sheets must be presented to the security officer prior to the opening of the City Council meeting, and if an organized group is present to speak on a common issue, please designate one person to present the group's comments. If your comments are in regard to an item that is subject of a public hearing, please wait until that item is introduced to speak. Time will also be monitored. If your comments are in regard to an evidentiary hearing, additional time may be granted. The City Council requests that you please adhere to the following guidelines: complete a sign-in sheet, address comments to the council as a whole and not to individual council members or city staff, speak from the podium in a civil, non-argumentative, and respectful manner. Personal attacks, which have the potential to disrupt the meeting, will not be tolerated, and you will be asked to sit down or be removed from the meeting. Keep comments to three minutes. This time, I'd like to invite Robert Cordell to the podium.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Robertson, City Council members, and other platform personnel. My name is Robert Cordell, and I live at 3300 Brookview Drive, right here in Rocky Mount City, on the rise, the center of it all.
There you go.
I come asking for three items of consideration. The first is a sauna to be repaired or replaced at the senior wire. The senior citizen need the sauna. The senior citizen want the sauna, and it will help our overall health, and it shouldn't cost that much to repair or replace it. If you need a petition from the senior citizen at that center, I can get that for you. The second item is on the car registration, we have a Nash County tax, an Iskona County tax, if you stay on Iskona County side, a Rocky Mount tax, and a Rocky Mount garage tax. I'm asking the senior city council, will you please consider eliminating this garage tax? We have been taxed enough. We're paying one of the highest excise taxes in the whole nation, and you receive state, local, and federal funds, and so this one tax can be eliminated that I don't think you all could miss, so asking you to eliminate that tax. And the third and final thing I'm asking you to do is the East Thomas Street and West Thomas Street, to rename the street to Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. Every major city in North Carolina have a Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, so why not us? As you know, Dr. King was here one time. He spoke at a home on West Thomas Street. He had dinner with the Stokes home right beside the Booker T. Washington Theater, no, Booker T. Washington Gym, and he had his first "I Have a Dream" speech done at the Booker T. Gym. As you know, he's worthy of this recognition, and if you need a petition for that, it will require a lot of work, but I can get that too. With the 23 blocks, the 36 businesses, the 184 housing units, and the five churches that are on East Thomas Street, starting to West Thomas Street at the lake, please consider renaming that street. And question is, who was West Thomas Street named after? Was it Thomas Jefferson? Hopefully not. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cordell. I'd like to invite Hef Turner to the podium. Is this in relation to the budget? I don't have a public hearing on that later.
Yes, it is.
If you'll just wait till the public hearing portion, that probably makes sense. I'll invite, is it Arnie Jones?
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmen, and City Manager. I'm here today to speak on behalf of my department, Environmental Service, which I am not here alone today. Y'all can stand, please stand. These are all the fellows that I work with on a daily basis. I'm not here, like I said, I got them here today because this is a serious matter. We've been overlooked far as this budget. Police Department got theirs, the Fire Department has theirs. Soon, it's going to be gas, it's going to be electric. We still on the back burner of things. What we propose is, why not we get a pay increase on our annual salary of 25%? You can't say it's not in the budget because everybody else got a piece of that pie. But like I said, we take care of the city like anybody else. Nobody else is going to get the trash out for you if it piles up, and they see this, and people in this room here see every day, they glad to see that trash get out of front of your house if it sits there all day and not be picked up. City Manager, you got a bonus. Why not us? We can share that, we all share the wealth here. We feel like we are second-class to every department here. I know y'all between each one of you can come up with a solution expeditiously, not waiting too much long on that. We've been up here for, I've been up here by myself countless times by myself, but I bought my whole department here today just to show y'all what's really going on out here. These guys, I go with these guys every day, and we do a good job for the city. We got fans, we got support. You know, we got bills to pay like anybody, rent going up, groceries going up. Like I said, some of them got to take second jobs just to make ends meet, and that's sad, and that's really sad. But I want y'all to work together to try to do something. We speaking for ourselves, we don't have anyone speaking for us. We don't have any department heads coming up here speaking for us at any time. We got to take action for us. Just consider that. You know, consider the small, man. It's like you said, Dr. Martin Luther King spoke up for us for sanitation. He gave his life for that, and y'all should do the same. Just look out and do the right thing. I don't have to keep preaching up here and tell you that. The people see that. Just do the right thing for us, and I appreciate that. And thanks for listening to this. And like I said, Mayor, we invite you, I mean, the City Manager, we invite you to come down to our department. We want to see you. We've been asking for you. Come down and sit, let's talk, and see if we work some things out here. And I appreciate it for y'all, let me speak on this behalf tonight. Thank you.
Back to Mr. Jones.
Quiet, welcome.
I'd like to invite Willie Martin Arrington to the podium, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Willie Cleo Arrington. Well, most of you know me by Cleo, but my name is Willie Arrington. I'm here tonight, I have passed out maps and deeds and everything to Old Rocky Mount Ball Field. For the last two and a half years, I have been fighting with the school board. I haven't come to you guys, this is my first time coming to you guys, you know? I gave each council member a copy of the map, which lays out the ballpark. I got an email the other day, which going to tell me that they are coming to the city because a proportion of the land wasn't deeded in. But if you look at the deed that I gave you, every portion and every acre of that baseball field is deeded into that deed. There is no liens, there's no nothing on that ballpark, but I keep getting a runaround from everybody that I go to. In the meantime, I'm getting ready to file a lawsuit against Nash School Board, okay? I have a, I started this process in 2021, January of 2021, and what's this, '23? And I still don't have the ballpark, okay? They have given, I bided $105,000 on that ballpark. What they did was, they brought in Nash County Holding, which is a part of the Mills, and outbid me, okay? I couldn't go no further than $105,000, okay? I have three partners. I have two bankers, and I'm a nonprofit organization. We're called Entrepreneurs of Tomorrow, okay? Our goal was to bring baseball back to Rocky Mount. I was going to have a collegiate team, I was going to have an independent league team. It would have been two to three games played at the stadium every day, okay? I was going to teach entrepreneurship to the kids and ball players that was coming in here. I was going to do a group of kids, my younger group was going to be from 12 to 16. My older ones was going to be from 18 to 25, which you're looking at money for the city. If I got four teams and I got 25 ball players on each team plus two managers, you do the math, okay? We needed housing, we need housing, okay? And everything else, and I know it would make this city some money. When I played baseball at Booker T., I was the bat boy at that same ballpark in the 60s, okay? I'm 75 years old, and what I came back to Rocky Mount to do when I got back here, I worked with the Buckland League for a short time, then I have a travel team, we are called the Rocky Mount Mudcats. We have been from Florida to Chicago. We have won championships in Florida, South Carolina, Chicago.
Thank you, Mr. Arrington. Thank you, Mr. Arrington. Time is up. Thank you. Please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Walker, I'm sorry.
Point of information, we have the maps. I don't know if Mr. Arrington didn't get a chance to get around to what his question was for us or not, but I wanted to know if we could at least get his question to us.
That's highly unusual, but of course we will this one time. If you can get it to his 30-second sound bite in terms of what the ask is.
My question is, the portion of land that they're talking about is in between the armory and the outfield fence of the ballpark. They're saying that's not on the map, but if you look at that map that's outlined, that is deeded on that map. That's the deed on the map. I've been to Nash and got the deeds and everything else, the map of the ball field and everything else. I have done my work.
So, Mr. Arrington, you're saying that our vote tonight is really moot, that this all belongs to the Rocky Mount or the Nash County School Board?
Actually, they're saying that you guys got to deed that land over there, looking for a quick deed of that, it's not even an acre of land. It's 2.02, 2.2 acres, you'll see it up there. That's what they're saying. You know that walkway between the baseball field and the armory that leads from Howard Street back over to Gobbles Street and Buick? That's what they're questioning. They're saying that the city never gave them that, but in 1977, when the City Council gave that land to the school board, everything was included. If you look at the deed that I have there, you will see that it is.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Arrington. You have questions? Yes, Councilman Blackwell?
Yes, sir. So do we have, that's part of the reason we asked that this be pulled, because I was unclear.
Right.
I knew that there were issues related to that, and from a legal perspective, I know that all of these directions here, feet and degrees and all that, is supposed to describe what this is. So are they saying, is the school, what is the school board saying to us? And has our legal department checked out?
That would be a question for Mr. Rose, not for Mr. Robertson.
The school board is saying, I guess based on a survey that they had done, that there's a little piece that was left out when the city conveyed the municipal stadium in exchange for the Fannie Gorham School in '77, I believe.
Not the whole amount, there's a portion that was left out in the description.
It's .23 acres.
Correct.
Yes, Councilman Daughtry.
If we look in your packet, this might be the time when we talk about this subject, but if you look in the packet and go to the map, it's in, what I infer is what is in green on page 59 of the PDF that we received. Which is right behind, according to what Mr. Arrington gave us, right behind the house on 814 off of Garvis Street, if I understand it correctly.
So it's not the whole field, it's a piece?
It's just a piece. Are you on the page 59 of the?
Here, here. See, that's the field. That according to the surveyor that the school board or somebody hired, said it was not included.
Okay, any other questions on that?
So does that invalidate the entire deed? Or is just that portion in question?
No, no, just that .23 acres.
Okay, so is that?
That is property that is owned by the city, according to the surveyor again. I didn't survey it, but we may want to, the city did not hire the survey. But if the city does in fact own that piece of property, it was part of the ball field and should have been conveyed, and it's a little portion that I don't think we want to own because it's not. And it's a little portion that I don't think we want to own because it's not due to liability.
Yes, sir. Councilman Knight.
I don't speak now, wait until that item. But the reason why we're asking, I asked that that item be pulled off the consent agenda because it seems as if something is not right with the bidding process, which has nothing to do what we are talking about, but indirectly it does. Because if it's correct what Mr. Arrington and Mr. Glenn Drone are saying, the school board discriminated against these gentlemen. And I don't want to vote on anything until that matter is cleared up. They placed a bid after the city of Rocky Mountain dropped out of the bid process. The bid was open for 29 days and allow a billionaire company to get in to outbid these young men who don't have the deep pockets to compete. And if that's true, then that's a problem and it's not fair and it needs to be exposed. That's the reason why I'm hoping that the city would ask our city attorney to request a public record request in reference to the bidding process so that we can see those gentlemen asked for it, but the school board denied their public requests.
Thank you. Councilman Daughtry.
I just would like to wait until we get to this item so we can have full discussion, maybe.
All right. All right, I like that. Let's move on. I'll invite Edith Joseph to the podium.
Good evening.
Evening.
I'm Edith Joseph and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Little Raleigh Community Association. And accompanying me are some of our concerned members from the Little Raleigh community. As Vice President, it is my honor to make you aware of our community's plans to move forward and to request your consideration and support as we embark on this journey. Once a thriving community in Rocky Mountain, once a community that was always on the leading edge of progress, Little Raleigh today is but a shell of its former self. That spirit of pride that formed a foundation of an all-American neighborhood that anyone would feel blessed to live in has been muted from years of neglect. This is our cry for help. The community as a whole, and especially those of us who have been fortunate enough to be the recipients of generational wealth, have organized and made a commitment to rebuild and to revitalize our community. We will provide as many resources as we can, but we will ask you for assistance along the way. We are taxpayers and would like to see our taxes at work in our community. Our first step, our first step, our community association has begun adopting the streets of Little Raleigh to clean up our community literally. As it turns out, street cleaning builds bonds faster and more long-lasting than months of meetings could do. We believe that the community that works together grows together. We are planning educational programs to educate our community about voting, homeownership, entrepreneurship, and a multitude of programs tailored to give our community the tools needed to lift Little Raleigh from the deaths of degradation suffered over the last several years. For your first step, we request that you maintain and good repair all city property that is located in Little Raleigh. We also request that you require those conducting business in our neighborhood to maintain the properties in which they have an interest. That means that realtors should be checking on unoccupied properties for rent to ensure that they are not becoming local dumping grounds and they are kept in good repair. We request that you encourage the desired behavior by doing everything within your power to penalize and continue disregard of our neighborhood. Little Raleigh is moving forward. We are going to do our part. We are going to ask you to support us as we forge forward. We ask that you see us. We ask that you hear us. And finally, we ask that you respond to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Joseph. Thank you, guys.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Blackwell.
I just want to thank Ms. Joseph and Little Raleigh. Now, this is not my word, it's Councilman Walker's word. But it just sort of underscores the conversation we just had a few minutes ago that it needs, that we need to, from many of our perspectives. It takes the majority to make anything move. But that we need to hire an individual to target communities that are intercity, core city communities like Little Raleigh, Happy Hill, Meadow Brook, others, both for development proactive and then to also look at code enforcement and perhaps people who can help us navigate these creative opportunities to invest in our neighborhoods. If traditional developers are not going to look at us, then we got to go develop ourselves. We can't wait for someone to rescue us. We got to rescue ourselves. So, I just want to use this as a prime example that we're in sync. And I believe most of us were supportive of a concept. We talked about it a lot, y'all. We run the tape back and listen to our committee, the whole conversation. So, thank you so much for coming in and articulating that better in three minutes than we did in an hour.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Walker.
Yeah, to the Little Raleigh Community Association, thank you all for building up the courage and the strength to come out tonight. I know it's challenging, but thank you all for coming. And hopefully, this is the last time you have to come. And we'll get to work and make sure that those changes are done. But again, thank you for your courage and thank you for coming out. Great job.
Councilman Knight.
Yes, not the last time, but they need to keep coming. And everybody else need to keep coming. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Joyner.
Thank you so much. I know that all of our community, 14 community, share the regards that you just shared. And we too look forward to putting the help there to help our community to reach these goals and objectives that they have laid out.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to invite Mumma Shaikh to the podium.
Mr. Mayor, council members, ladies and gentlemen. Today's slavery is repackaged with low stagnant wages to oppress and exploit a pool of cheap labor. This is modern slavery reflected in the paltry wages of public works employees. $16.83 an hour, $35,000 a year. With inflation driving up food, gas, housing, and healthcare costs, this is the low-wage group that is forever struggling to cover their basic needs, long-term driving them into debt. A combination of inflation, stagnant wages, and debt has produced a poverty crisis in Rocky Mountain with dire consequences. Blight, homelessness, food insecurity, home foreclosures, and of course, crime. The request for a 10% across-the-board increase for these overworked and underpaid folks met with strong and immediate pushback, reason being it needs an additional $1 million in the proposed budget. Underpaid equals underprivileged and undervalued. Increasing the pay rates of law enforcement and first responders by 36% and 27% respectively and denying a 10% increase for these poorly paid public works employees is morally reprehensible. They deserve a living wage too. Rocky Mountain.
Stop, guys, please. Officer, I might have to ask that we clear this at some point in a minute. Please, let's be respectful. Please stop this. Let's be respectful of the speaker. I'd like to hear, I believe in freedom of speech. I think it's important, I think it's important that everybody's here participating. But I'd like to ask that everybody please maintain some semblance of order in the council chambers. Ms. Shaikh, please.
Thank you. Rocky Mountain employs highly trained professionals for public works for a range of vital services to safeguard the lives of humans, animals, and the environment. They are the guardians. They are the guarantors of public safety. You are safe walking on uncluttered roads, sidewalks, parks, and in your neighborhood. You are safe from disease, air and water pollution due to proper management of trash and disposal of animal carcass. You are safe from contaminated water flooding the city and your community, to name just a few. Rocky Mountain is livable, clean, sanitary, comfortable, and safe because of these low-wage city workers who toil in all weather conditions. They deserve a living wage. They deserve what they ask for, 25%. Raise their depressed wages. Pay them like you cannot lose them. Pay them and show them that you appreciate their commitment and their dedication to their work. They are worthy of any amount that is in the proposed, any additional amount in the proposed budget. Remember when you were so eager to spend $20 million for an urgent judicial center? Nothing is now more urgent than to spend the extra $1 million to improve the lives of this low-income public works employees.
Thank you.
The backbone of essential services in Rocky Mountain.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Did we give her a time?
Well, I did. I gave it back to her, though. I did. I hit the pause button. Really, one more outburst. I am going to ask that we clear the chamber. I am very, very, very excited everybody's here. Participating is very important. At the same time, in conducting the meeting, it makes sense if we can just maintain some control. Clearly, I understand that you're here to support. We saw you stand up. I think that's awesome. I really do. And we're hearing the message. But at the same time, I don't want to treat this as if it's a game show. Who can generate the most excitement, you know, regardless of what the issue is? So, please, if I can ask you to just hold on a little longer. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Mary Warren to the podium. Ms. Mary Warren?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Mary Warren. I live at 318 Amla Avenue. And I come here tonight to address the issue about the Dollar General. We, the community, do not feel that this, our community, need this type of store in our neighborhood. We are working to transform Southeast Rocky Mountain community. And I understand all the concerns about the city wanting to do something with that Planet Oil Mill section. We've been talking about that for years. But I feel right now, and so many of the people that spoke out at our awards meeting, that we don't need a Dollar General at this particular time. What I believe, if we, the community, we are getting ready to do a cleanup of our community. And I believe as we move forward in the Southeast Rocky Mountain community and as the city grows, we will not have a problem finding a business to put on that land. But if we give Dollar General that opportunity now, we are not going to bring, they are not bringing inequality to our neighborhood. And I just feel like we need to wait and give the community and give other businesses the opportunity to bring something of value to the Southeast Rocky Mountain community. I've been in that community for 40 years. I saw it die. And I now see the community on the rise. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Councilman Joyner.
Say to one in our community that we not only hear you, we hear our community. And as Councilman Blackwell has said, we have in our closed session, mainly not a closed session, but our council as a whole addressed these issues and looking at how we can respond to these corridors in our community, looking at them as a whole and not as individuals.
Thank you, Mr. Joyner. At this time, I'd like to invite Reverend Nehemiah Smith, Jr. to the podium.
Good evening. First, I'd like to say I don't understand how applauding for what's right is out of order. Anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Anyway, in a world that often places high value on positions of power and prestige, it is crucial for us as a city to adopt a different perspective. We must recognize the worth and dignity of every worker regardless of their role or status. Let us commit to valuing and appreciating the contributions of low-level workers in our city and the broader society. May we strive to create environments that recognize the worth of these fellow citizens. One of the ways we can demonstrate our value for low-level workers is by ensuring they are paid their worth. Fair and just wages not only provide for the needs of individuals and their families, but also acknowledge the significance of their contributions. When we compensate workers fairly, we affirm their dignity and acknowledge their efforts in doing what many may refuse to do. The city of Rocky Mountain must strive to create a culture that values and compensates all workers equitably. We just don't have it, Reverend Smith. We don't have the resources. It's not that you don't have the resources, you don't have the desire. Don't tell me what you can't do. When you wanted an event center, you built it. When you needed to remove a racist monument, you found the money and you brought it down. When you needed property for growth, you took it. Where there was disrepair, you fixed it. When the city needed a fresh look, you rebranded it. These men need to be fairly paid. That means that you're going to pay them. May we be agents of change advocating for justice and equality in the workplace. Let us treat all workers with respect, affirming their value and acknowledging their efforts in doing what many may refuse to do. In this way, we reflect the heart of Christ who came not to be served, but to serve. 25% across the board before you implement the new system that you're going to vote affirmatively on the 26, and then we'll go from there. But I'll be back.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Ms. Nellene Richardson to the podium.
Mr. Mayor, can I say something just briefly?
Yes, sir. Councilman Blackwell, I'm sorry.
So, that's okay. I was trying to reserve my comments for the budget section. So, if anybody talking about increases or changes to the budget need to stay and hang around and not leave when public comment is over, so you can participate in that discussion as well.
Okay, I'd like to invite Ms. Nathalie O'Ree to the podium. I'm sorry, Nellene. Colly, I got ahead of myself.
Please excuse how I'm talking. I had all surgery today. But I'd like to say to all of the city councilmen that has come out for our love walk, I would like to say thank you very much. We made a lot of connections with different people and we are working with them to bring some change in our communities. And for any city councilman that has not been able to come, we would still love to reschedule and be with you. We understand when you have other things ahead to come up. But I would really like to give a special thank you to Mr. TJ Walker, city councilman. He spent the entire day with us Saturday, introduced us to some very great people, and we have really made a love connection. And we have other things that will be coming to each city councilman and mayor. I talked to Mr. Walker about some of the things that we plan to do in our community and the things that we want to see come. So, y'all will get it. And by the next city council meeting, y'all should have it on the agenda. Because we plan to keep coming in the name of love. And we expect to see our mayor and the rest of you city councilmen out in our communities. We are also doing voter registration, so you know what that means. Elections are coming. And we expect to hold each and every last one of you accountable for us. And so, that's all that I have. And I'll be back.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, I'd like to invite Ms. Nathalie O'Ree to the podium.
Good afternoon, Mayor, city manager, and city council members. My name is Nathalie O'Ree and I live in the Meadow Brook community. And I am here advocating for the sanitation workers to get increased pay from our budget. And, you know, I'd just like to thank them, you know, for the beautiful. And, you know, I'd just like to thank them, you know, for the beautiful job that they do in the Meadowbrook community. They keep the park looking good, they keep the streets looking good. I've been participating in the love walks, and we can walk down clean streets because of our sanitation workers. And I would just greatly appreciate any efforts that the city council could make to give these people a well-deserved increase, because I know what goes in my garbage can. And when they come to pick it up, I don't hear no complaints, nothing's left beside the street except the garbage can, they put it back where they get it from. And sometimes I've seen the trucks come through with just one person. Used to, three people, one guy drove the truck and two people jumped out on each side. But now, one truck come, one guy, and he's got this little automatic thing, I don't know how he does it. But they keep doing it over and over and over, very consistently, fifty-two weeks a year. And I am thoroughly impressed, and I pray that you will acknowledge their efforts with the raise. Thank you.
Thank you, absolutely. Could agree more, I appreciate everything the sanitation department does do. I'd like to invite Mr. Criminalist Dancy, Criminalist Dancy to the podium.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Criminalist Dancy, P.O. Box thirteen ninety-one Pine Town, North Carolina. I listened to the conversation during the committee of the whole meeting about businesses. Same, some of the same conversations since the late eighties, early nineties, when I started attending this meeting, and nobody up there has been here longer than their attorney. We go way back, none of y'all was on the council. I was vice chair of Need Incorporated back then. City workers, I still with Black Workers for Justice back then. Here again, they still fighting, paid them. CB Dodgers and Steve Hall was county commissioners. And at that time, you got three reverends up here now, but back then you had three reverends, back in the late eighties, early nineties, Reverend Thomas Walker, Reverend Gail Thorn, and Reverend Jerry Spur. I go way back. Some of this stuff y'all talking about, you know, you need to do some homework so you can know where you came from, where you are. These guys come on board, and you, I don't know why all of them come on board. But Jos Dickens, a lot of folk don't know, my second cousin, her daddy, my dad, her daddy and my daddy, grandma, sister, bro. You can't let everybody know what's going on back then, so I didn't let nobody know. And so, I got a lot of old Ken folk here, you'll be surprised who they are. But Jos is no longer, she was fighting across the six to four, still fighting out there now. So this is nothing new. Like I said, with Steve Hall and the Dennis and CB Dodgers, they were businessmen. They, look at what they put in out there. Kingsbury, Steve Hall got can banging, look at all the stuff that CB Dodgers doing. I don't know nobody up here, black, that got that kind of resource. So y'all fighting a battle, but just keep on fighting, maybe someday somebody will come in and put some businesses on Edgecombe's side. Now, I'm here representing Edgecombe County Democrats. I was just appointed, elected as the chair, the first vice chair. Didn't want to take it, but I'm getting by act. So I'm coming here to hold my Democrats, three of Edgecombe County ones are Democrats and one national, one unaffiliated. So I'm here to hold you all accountable, all of you, but especially my Democrats. And I come, I do this out of pocket so I can record stuff, so I can let my folk know when I send out emails, they'll know what's going on. And so, I'm here, I don't live in Rocky Mount, been working here for thirty-six years at Honeywell, it's home for me. Like I said, vice chair, me, been to all kinds of community meetings over here, been in life fully paid member of the NWACP. So if anybody got any questions, why I'm up here, because I love people. I support my folk that live here, and I support the friends and the enemies. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dancy. I'd like to invite Mr. Bronson Williams to the podium.
I want to say good evening to the mayor and council. Development, what does it really mean? Is it the process that creates growth, progress, positive change for physical, economic, environmental, social, and demographics that we will advance in our communities? Maybe for some development means for any government or organization, whatever's thrown at us that we're supposed to accept it, that we're supposed to settle. Where in the world did we get this settlement mentality from? Of course, you've heard people tonight talk about that sanitation workers shouldn't settle. I applaud that effort, means that we don't have that settlement type of mentality. Yet, for over years, since two thousand eight, I've seen this council talk about poverty, get rid of that, eradicating it, looking at health disparities, looking at educational opportunities and et cetera. But then, on the agenda before you removed it today, was bringing the Dollar General to our community. After we had many meetings in which folks said they didn't want it, got in the meeting and it was said, it's a done deal, there's nothing that you can do about it, so just take it as it is. But yet, we'll go around and say that people should hear the voices of the public? We'll go around and say all this great stuff, especially if we're looking for votes? But the reality is, people matter three hundred and sixty-five days a year, not just during election time. I would hope that there's community engagement when it comes to what these taxpaying folks want in our community. We don't elect kings or queens, we elect people as servants to help us move our community forward. That is our role, that is our responsibility. And when the land was owned, and still is owned by the city, to have the thought process that you're going to bring in a poverty-praying business like the Dollar General, that speaks against the culture and values that I believe this council has. Not only will I work to hold Democratic and unaffiliates, but Republicans too. All of us have our responsibility. But again, as Pastor Smith talked about, I've seen this council do development when you built the event center, I've seen this council do development when you revision the Douglas Block, I've seen the city council development when you built the sports complex. So I know you know what development is. How in the world did this thing get on this agenda for tonight? That is the question. But I hope that as I live, that we'll never see it happen again. Let's not bring poverty, our praying type of businesses in our community.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. I'd like to invite Troy Davis to the podium.
Good evening. Sanitation workers, we hear you. Ms. Edith Joseph, I hear you, if you're still in the room. The other day, when you came by my office, I didn't have a chance to speak with you. But I hear you. Southeast Rocky Mount, I hear you. Little Raleigh, The Hilltop, all these communities are neglected, and it's neglected by policies that part of this council and just the city of Rocky Mount as a whole has neglected the citizens of Rocky Mount. And I say that to say, we have houses that was torn down, that the city of Rocky Mount failed to collapse, collect demolition fees that are sitting around that we can't even collect because it's been past ten years, the statute of limitation has expired. But the citizens won't ever know that because their elected officials won't tell them. Taxes that are due. We have a house on Falls Road, the roof is collapsing, the lights is on. What type of hazard is that? I rode down Nelson Street the other day, I think it's three, three, three Nelson Street. I don't think taxes been paid in a while, the roof is caving in, but we have a community development department that is giving out money, two hundred thousand dollars on a house on Branch Street. Two hundred thousand dollars to build one single house. That is absurd. It's clear, Mr. Williams, I don't think this council knows what development is. They know how to spend your money recklessly. We need to hold these elected officials accountable, and we need to make sure they understand what development is. We have vacant lots, we have boarded up homes. That is how you eradicate blight in our communities. And I'm going to hold this council accountable to do just that.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Okay, that brings us to, yes, I'm sorry, Councilman Knight.
The comment was made about the council brought this Dollar General to be put on the agenda, that is not true. The deal was struck, whatever words you use, by Mr. Peter Barney, that's no longer here. We heard the morning show, well, not the morning show, W N C R, picked up the phone, called Mr. Joyner, and explained to him, but Mr. Joyner, Councilman Joyner, is not to be blamed for neglect for the last hundred and some years. We are not to be held responsible for what people who came before us have not done. It was this council that was told that we could not tear down those silos that was contaminated, had been there for years. Mayor Turnage told us we couldn't do it, but we did it. Tip-top bakery sitting across from Little Hope, which is now Foster Memorial Church, for years blighted, drug havened. It was this council that took the initiative to tear it down. This council instituted minority women business development because we had less than one percent of black contractors in this city participating in millions and millions of dollars of your tax dollars. It was this council, this man that says community wealth building, this council that brought Dr. Jim Johnson in to talk about wealth being built in our community. This takes a long time to catch up with a hundred and twenty years, and we just getting here. Twenty years, fifteen years, a blink of an eye, a planned development of infrastructure, roads, highway, water, and sewer. It was the blockbuster, and those that came before us had left the houses in our community that now dilapidated the downtown. We didn't own nothing but Douglas Block, but this council, well, the council before this, and this council decided to save our history, to bring the core of Rocky Mount back. Because it wasn't like Mayor Body said, our downtown was on Wentstead and Vivinew Boulevard, and tried to chastise Reuben Blackwell, and we said, no. Downtown is right here in Rocky Mount, Main Street, Tarver Street, Washington Street. It was this council that when the mayor said that you, a person wasn't a real developer, we said, we believe in you, and we gonna, like my mother said, hope you with your dreams and your vision. It was this council, when this city hauled and have a two blacks, and now it's mirrors this population, I'm gonna cut it off, because I, you know, we talking about the corm and somebody's preaching. But this young lady that comes down to talk about sanitary, you exactly right, and it's hard not to clap when you hear a speech such as that coming from a city, such as a speech coming from the late Dr. Martin Luther King and those who came before us, because it resonate down in your soul, and it makes you want to say hallelujah when you're in church, but in here, we can clap. If we could clap for a baseball, football team, we can clap on the truth. And I'm not trying to grandstand, but it was this council that having serious discussion. Attack us for what we are trying to do to help us. Go back, read the record, read the minutes, read the newspapers, see the TV show, read the blogs of who they call names about poverty pips, social welfare, Edgecombe ain't no good, y'all thugs, y'all nobody, y'all welfare queen, it's not us, we are trying to pull our people up. Don't blame us. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Knight. Does anybody else care to speak? Okay. That brings us to item number nine on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. I'd like to remind everybody that item nine J has been removed from consideration tonight. Items nine H I N D will be voted on as items thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen. So with that, I'd like a motion to approve the consent agenda with those exceptions.
So moved.
All right. Councilman Knight made the motion, seconded by Councilman Joyner. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Item passes. That brings us to, keep up my notes, to item ten, it's a public hearing relative to the public budget that was, is for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. This time, I'll open the floor to anyone who cares to speak from the public related to the proposed budget for city of Rocky Mount for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. I'll call on you, Mr. Hep Turner.
Good evening.
Evening.
My name is Hep Turner, and I live at five hundred Atlantic Avenue. I'm not a public speaker, and I'll have to read these words, but it is my voice. An inventory of the historic homes in my neighborhood has never been taken. Inventories of all the white areas surrounding central city have been taken. The three white inventories were taken twenty-five years ago, and they were then included in the cities together tomorrow comprehensively, but not my neighborhood. No inventory was taken, and it was completely left out of both the preservation plan and the comprehensive plan. I'm asking you tonight to please budget money for an inventory and preservation plan for my neighborhood. The inventory should have been taken twenty-five years ago, but it wasn't. I just watered under the bridge. But it would be a crime to once again exclude my neighborhood from the city's inventory and preservation plan, and then move forward with another comprehensive plan. In a budget meeting a couple of weeks ago, Reverend Joyner voiced his concerns about whether or not the proposed update to the city's comprehensive plan would in fact be inclusive. I'm here to point out to you a simple fact. Without an update of the city's inventory and preservation plan, the city's new comprehensive plan cannot and will not be inclusive. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I have, I'd like to leave the council with this call to action. It's a one-page call to action, and I have copies just to leave for the council. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Is there any other member of the public here wanting to speak to the proposed budget? Yes, sir.
Again, good evening to you. I want to speak to the budget. In the number of years I've been reviewing the budget since two thousand and eight, or seven, this is the first time I've seen the budget laid out the way that it has been, that's laid out, I want to say, great in the design and presentation of the particular budget. I know Ken Hunter and staff certainly, I'm sure, have been working hard, along with the managers, working hard to make that happen. But it gave a sense of just vibrancy, just looking at how it was displayed. You saw on the front page the budget where it gave consideration to the fire department, the police department, et cetera, and others. What I will say about the budget, I do, as I've been talking for years about updating our comprehensive plan, I was excited to see that there were dollars set aside for the comprehensive plan, also dollars set aside for downtown, and another blanket, I think housing, I think was housing plan for the other. At first, I saw the amount of money that was, the city would be receiving from interest income, I said, I said, wow, that's a lot of money, but I realized that those numbers seem to bear out to be true. That was consistent with what Edgecombe County is projecting in their potential interest income for the dollars that they have as well. Lastly, while we understand the concerns of employees with the city, if the council can find that those dollars without an increase to property taxes, wonderful. But I do know that you have to live within your budget. We understand what needs are of citizens as everyday people such as myself. It's also trying to work within a budget. But the way, of course, math is, it ain't but so much 25%, so 30%, so 60% one can give when you got 100% at the end of the day. We want to speak realistically as well. And are there other ways of showing appreciation for bonuses and things of that nature for staff retention that can also help? I don't know. But what I do know is that I want this council to vote on a property tax increase. That's what I do know. As with private I have in and around the building of a city. So those are things, because again, council don't make money, right? You get it from taxpayers, you get it from grants, and I understand the hard work of these men and women every single day. That's not to be disputed. One thing I don't like is for those to be called lower totem pole workers. I believe that everybody's high on the totem pole at the end of the day. And so if that means they need to change the messaging as to how these people are received in our community, for our staff, within the organizational structure, then that's some internal conversation that needs to be had as to how you can show appreciation for all workers. But thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Any other member here from the public?
My friend and I, we agree to disagree on this. I believe that if you're gonna call them essential workers, pay them like essential workers. If that's what you're gonna call them, pay them that way. Find the money. Like I said, you find money everywhere else. Find the money for these men and these women that work hard every day. And if that means, hey, that you got to raise the property tax, so be it. Because these people deserve to be paid. They do a great job in this city. We find money for everything else. Find money for them.
Thank you. Any other, any other member of the public here wanting to speak to our budget? Yes, Ms. Ory.
Once again, my name is Mrs. Ory, and I just have a brief question regarding the hiring of another assistant city manager, because we do not want anyone to get burned out, want everybody to, you know, have their fair share of the workload, and is there any consideration being made for?
Miss managers, they're funding for another assistant manager?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Praise God.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, please, please come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Antoinette Cutler, Pastor Antoinette Cutler. First of all, I want to thank you for not increasing the taxes this year, nor next year. I pray to God that you won't increase them on our taxes to make up for what you have done this year. You have given the police department a 36% raise. You have given the fire department 27%. And you're now 10%. I still just don't think it's enough for our sanitation workers because I may not be using the right term for it, but they are the lowest part of our totem poles, but they should be at the top of our payroll. Because they are the ones that keep our city clean, and I have never, ever had a problem with them. They're always right on time. They're gentlemen, even in our community, men and women. So let's consider in this budget at least a 25% pay raise for them because they definitely deserve it. I believe that if you find the money for everything else, you can certainly find the money for them.
Thank you. Is any other member of the public here wishing to speak as it relates to our proposed budget? Any other member of the public here that would care to speak on the proposed budget? Hearing not all, close the public hearing at this point in time. Brings us to item number 11. Yes, sir, Councilman Blackwell.
Are you allow us to speak?
Yes, yes, please. Of course, of course.
Thank you so much. I haven't heard anything tonight that I cannot support. I'm 100% behind looking at the value of our essential workers. I agree with Reverend Smith that if you say somebody's important, you're supposed to show it. And what I also want to say, we need to understand what the process of budget is too. There's a misconception that the city council makes the budget. We do not create the budget. The budget is created by the staff. The city council sets the priorities. The staff reflects those priorities and how things are budgeted. We don't create one spreadsheet, one numerical. We do not set the value for anything. We respond to what's given to us. Now, we can say as a council that our priority is public works, and I'll also include in there the folks who work in parks and recreation because it's one and the same. You know, you're cleaning up ditches, you're clearing properties, you're making sure that our neighborhoods and our streets are safe and clean. And you do it without complaining, and you do it regardless if it's 100 degrees outside or 20 below. You are there, and we appreciate you. And you deserve to not be taken for granted. That being said, we have a manager, he has a team, and so if it's the desire of the council, as reflected by our accountability to the people, which means you, then it's up to them to bring us something that we can vote on. I want to be real clear about that. We do not create budgets. So that's a conversation. My question, when we had Committee of the Hole, I think last month, I asked the HR department, are we certain that the supervisors and department managers really understand how to do appropriate evaluations so that you all are being rewarded fairly all along the way? I see heads shaking. That means something. That means something. I want to know, do we have classes of importance in the city of Rocky Mountain? Some people consistently receive an exceptional outstanding, and other people receiving meet standard, meet standard, meet standard. That's where your money is and how you get evaluated. And that's what, that's what builds sustainability within a budget, is that you don't have to go across the board and give everybody something one time because bills go up, things go up every day, cost of living goes up every day. So to me, there's also an equal pressure on how our leadership is leading in each department. How are you being evaluated every day, and are you being fairly compensated? Now, in our budget, I've been told that we have a comp plan. And I'm not clear about what the comp plan is because we haven't seen it. We've heard about it, but I don't think we've seen it. So I would hope that we would see the actual document, or at least a summary of the document, so we're clear that the positions that we are voting on and taking a position on are in alignment with what the will of our community is. I've also been told that the comp plan and study does not cover every single position. That's what I've heard. I don't know that. I don't know that, and that's not my lane. That's not my lane. I'm gonna try to stay within it. But what I do know is that fairness and equity and treating people right is everybody's responsibility. That's what I do know. And our budget should reflect that. So what I also say is that somebody stated it clearly, you know, we have to manage what our priorities are. And if our priorities are to value our people first and then our projects second, then we need to think about where our priorities and projects are. And it doesn't mean that we have to cut everything in the inner city in order to pay people right. That ain't right either. So I would just say that, you know, my perspective is that I do support, and this is just Reuben Blackwell, I'm not speaking for anybody, I'm speaking for myself, that I do support an increase targeted specifically to folks that everybody else takes for granted and looks over. And without having our trash and our recycling picked up every single week, if we can't value you, then we don't value ourselves. So that's my perspective about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak? Yes, Councilman Knight.
Thank you, Councilman Blackwell. And in reference to the budget, I know our pay and comp studies in our budget, but I would ask this council if we would pull that out until we get the information of the pay and comp study. In 2021, pulling it up now was the pay and comp study, and the reason why the council didn't pass it because all of the employees were not going to get a raise. And that's when we decided to do a 4.5% across the board for all employees this year. And also in 2021, the comp study included environmental service, water resource as targeted areas for additional increases, and this appeared to be eliminated in this pay and comp study because we only focus on fire, police, and energy resources. And so I asked that we pull that out, and I have two more pages of concerns in reference to that. And one I do like to say that in 2021, to $15, and then in 2023, we increasing the minimum pay to 1683. And we wanted to know, how many employees would this be by this increase? Other like to point out with this comp study, that back when we discussed the budget again. But I think the council really need to see what are the ranges are, what positions are, and how, and what employees are going to be making. Yes, I stood with sanitation, I stood with parson wreck, fire, police, all our employees. I value all of our employees, and I'm quite sure the council does as well. But I, but I want to say, I mentioned, someone mentioned 25% increase. In my comments at our last council meeting, I said 10% and left out parson wreck. We have a lot of employees who we have left out. Not we, let me back up. With our manager made the bold move, we made city, local news, state, quiet news, and national. And it caused a domino's effect, and it was a 36% increase. And no one, I don't think, is going to go against our police department because we want to be protective in this community, and they deserve, you know, exactly what they got. So is our fire department, which I believe is going to be 27%. We appreciate what you all do, very dangerous work, wouldn't take nothing from you. But we also have to look at all our employees from our sanitation department, parson wreck, our water meters, readers, all our clerks, because they're all a valued employees with this city. So we have to task Brother Blackwell, you said we don't create the budget, but we can direct our city manager to go back and adjust the budget and to consider what we have heard. If the council don't direct our city manager in what to do, then we can't say it's not in the budget. We manage three people. City manager, the clerk, and the attorney. The city manager manage all of you all, which is staff. But this council got to give our city manager direction. The bold move with 30%, 27%, we got to say as a council, we want to see sanitation, public works, parson wrecks, and whatever else, get a percentage before the pay and comp study. I don't know how we gonna do it, how he gonna do it, you know, without bankrupting the city maybe. But we got to figure it out and give him a direction on what to do, Mayor and council members. We have to give him that direction. We have to say what we want him to put in the budget. Am I wrong? I'm asking my council, am I wrong?
That's what I said. We said priorities.
That's right. We church, we say, look at your neighbor, and say, neighbor, am I wrong or right?
Right.
Am I right, Mr. Lyles Daughtryd?
I feel confident that we're gonna make things work, and we've got to work within, we've got to work within the monies that we have. So we'll, we'll see what we can do, and I think we have more talking to do.
Thank you. That's what I want to hear. So you're all listening? We have more talking to do, but we moving in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else have anything else they'd like to add?
Just a minute.
Yes, Councilman T.J. Walker.
Thank everybody for coming, sanitation, men and women, and for everyone for being here tonight to be a part. I would ask that, we haven't, I think Councilman Knight just said it, we haven't seen the comp study. So I would ask that we look at that first to make sure it is where, because we're making a lot of comments now without seeing the details. So let's just make sure we see the details that our manager and staff has set before us with hearing all of the comments, and then move from there. Because I think Councilman Knight was asking to pull it before we, before, but we haven't seen it yet. So I think we need to lay eyes on it first and then move forward. Because I have, I think our last manager, the situation, I've only passed since 2019, but we did not give the, we did not approve of that comp study. And so we made the changes need to be made, but we need to make sure that we look at the details and then move accordingly.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, Councilman Daughtryd.
I agree with Councilman T.J. Walker, and I would also like to say city manager Keith Rogers is here. We hired Mr. Rogers because he's a, he's a competent city manager, and he's going to move our city forward, and we cannot move our city forward, he cannot move our city forward without the staff, qualified staff, well-paid staff. I say this because I have full confidence in our city manager. And I know that things will be, he has to make decisions on what to do with staff. And I think it's a difficult thing because everybody wants more. Heck, I want more. I'm in my own business. I can't pay myself more. But I say that because we've got to work within the budget, and it's also, I've had a few talks with the city manager, and part of it, and so has the rest of the city council. And we've also heard about opportunities for advancement, and I think within, I think our city manager is, and I don't want to speak for you, Mr. Rogers, but I feel confident there's opportunities for advancement where maybe in the past there has not been, that we talked about it when we were presented in the committee of the hole, was that two, two committee of the holes ago. So I say that because it's more than just the dollar today, and I'm not trying to make excuses, but we got to, we've got to work within, and I can't make excuses because I don't know what it is. But I feel confident, and I want it to be, everyone to go away, I feel confident with our city manager, and so should you.
Thank you. Councilman Joyner?
Yes, let me, let me thank city council, mayor, city manager and staff. I want to thank everyone for being here tonight to express your right and freedom to express yourself. I hope that our managers and these departments will understand workers expressing themselves at this level. Also, as a council, Also, as a council, we appreciate our citizens for coming and expressing your desires to us as well. And all of us have to agree to hear each other and do the best we can for each other as we move forward, and not to victimize each other in any way for expressing our thoughts and belief. And I think if we do that, then we'll meet those goals and objectives, not only today, but in the future to come.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilman Light?
When I said pull the pay and comp study, I was talking about, uh, if we approve the budget, uh, with that item in there, uh, that we should, um, have a copy of it so we can look at it and not just pass it. Because when we pass it, then anything can go in there. So what I would like to see it, uh, if it's a lot of item in the budget for that, is to remove it. If we don't get it before we vote on the budget, uh, so we can know what's in the, um, pay and comp study.
Thank you for the clarification. With that, we'll move on to item number, uh, eleven, which is consideration of the minutes and recommendations from a planning board meeting, which was held on May ninth of 2023. This time, I'd like to have a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the planning board minutes.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Joyner, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Jaboris Walker. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. That brings us to the public hearing. It's relative to the following rezoning request recommended for approval and found in compliance with the comprehensive plan by the planning board. It's a request by the Shields family partnership to rezone two parcels containing plus or minus point three-two acres at eight oh three Carter Street and five, six twelve North Tillery Street from I one to B five. Is there somebody here from the staff who would speak to this for us?
Good evening, Joseph Bo cook, interim director of development services. Uh, this rezoning request, uh, was recommended for approval by the city's planning board at their meeting last month in May. Uh, the area is, the property itself is presently zoned light industrial. Uh, the request was spurred by the, uh, desire for the owner to redevelop the property. However, some of the standards that apply to the light industrial district, uh, specifically the required building setbacks made redevelopment of the property, uh, prohibitive. Um, so, uh, staff recommended approval, and planning board has followed suit to, uh, redesignate this property as, um, commercial services or B five district. Happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Are there any question, any questions for Mr. Bo cook?
So from,
Yes, sir.
From us?
Please, yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay. So, um, so there is an interest in redeveloping the property, or they, can you give us?
Yes, sir, uh, reusing the property, um, the, uh, like I said, the, the building setbacks in the aisle one zone require, I think seventy-five feet, and the property itself is only fifty feet wide. Uh, so it pretty much eliminated the possibility of any redevelopment occurring on the site.
And the property owners are leading development, or they just want to prepare the property for redevelopment?
Uh, I believe they want to reuse the site, yes, sir.
So there is a plan?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Okay. All right, well, this time I'll open the, um, podium to anybody, member of the public who cares to speak to this particular issue.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mike Tolson, uh, with Mackay Associates, just here on behalf of the, uh, property owner tonight, and just to answer any questions if you have, don't really have anything to add to Mr. Bo cook's, uh, presentation, just if you have any more questions and as an agent for the owner.
I know we're not supposed to go, yeah, I think I got lots of them, but, um, uh, so, uh, can you, can you give any, just a overshot of overview, big picture view of what the vision of the property owners are?
So the, uh, property owner is trying to acquire more properties in that block, um, that would kind of alleviate the situation, but he hasn't been able to tie a lot of those down. He's currently working on developing self-storage out there, um, and mini-storage type, uh, approach. But, uh, I'm not sure of the long-range plan of what he's trying to do, but that is the current use that he is trying to develop. And he's got another couple of, uh, properties in the vicinity that he is using that for.
So it's more of a, um, pure business, so there's no housing at all?
Uh, not at this time.
Pure, pure business. Okay, thank you. So we would trust that if that rezoning occurs, that we work with the planning department to ensure there's appropriate, uh, blending?
Yeah, the developer plan and difference.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other member of the public here that cares to speak to this particular rezoning request? All right, here none, I'll, I'll close the public hearing at this point in time, and I'll receive a motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Blackwell, seconded by Councilman Joyner. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Uh, item twelve is consideration of a resolution requested by the city council in response to Senate Bill one sixty-nine. Um, I rec, I'll, I'll receive a motion to adopt the resolution as written and presented.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Joyner, seconded by Councilman Daltridge.
It's one sixteen.
It's, you go ahead, then, Mr. Daltridge.
Um, can, would, would y'all mind if I read this in public?
Please.
Um, well, let me make it so I can read. Uh, thi- this was, first of all, our city manager has sent a, a letter to our legislative, um, um, representation throughout, uh, Rocky Mount, Edgcombe, and Nash County, as well as, um, um, to the mayors within Nash County and to the Nash County commissioners regarding this. And then also from last meeting sent one about Senate Bill two forty-eight, um, which, um, obviously did not, um, do any good. And then also about Senate Bill six seventy-five, but this is about one sixty-nine. And whereas the city of Rocky Mount has legal authority pursuant to North Carolina general statute, uh, one sixty-eight dash fifty-eight to proceed with satellite annexation, I just lost it. Um, I apologize. I should have printed it. Um, whereas there was a request by members of the Nash County Board of Commissioners to local delegation to revise pending legislation to include provisions requiring the city of Rocky Mount, as well as other municipalities in Nash County, to provide prior notification of and receive approval from the Nash County Commission in order to proceed with our existing legal authority as municipalities and regarding satellite annexation. And whereas the city of Rocky Mount is within its authority to approve satellite annexations by petition, allowing property owners to exercise their individual property rights to include their parcel or parcels with the city. And the language included in S P one sixty-nine fundamentally violates the inherent rights of the city as a municipality in the state of North Carolina to administer affairs within the context of current state law. Now therefore, uh, you know, technology is great sometimes, but in this particular case it's not. But anyway, yeah. Reason I wanted to read it is because basically the Nash County commissioners would like to, um, for to get it, for the, city of Rocky Mount to ask for approval anytime there's a satellite annexation. And this city council by vote from last time, although we had two city council members that were absent, but they fully agree after I've spoken with them, goes against everything that is, um, that is, uh, what is provided us by law and acting as an independent board, uh, governing this city. And so we've, we're doing this to let our legislators know that we're against, uh, Senate Bill one sixty-nine.
Okay. Councilman Light?
This has been, whom?
The bill was originally sponsored by Senator Barnes, it was attached to Senate Bill one sixty-nine that had passed the Senate, and it was passed over to committee in the House, and it's stuck in House committee at the moment.
Wha- what I'm saying, I, I agree with the resolution. Um, but, um, I want to ask this question because when other bills were being, uh, created and was trying to get it to pass into law, we had council members working with Lisa Barnes, Senator Barnes, on certain bills. So I'm asking are those same people who publicly stated that they was working on S P four seventy-three, are you working on this with Lisa, uh, Senator Barnes? Also, uh, is our Senator, um, House Representative, Mr. Chester, is he working? Uh, what is his position on that as well? And so what I'm saying, when we, or some of us, work with those who have an agenda to move us backwards, uh, and then create another bill to stop progress, um, then we should recognize that. We should recognize that. So I just want to ask, uh, mayor, are you working with her to not do this?
Uh, I tell you this, Councilman, I have been on the forefront of fighting this particular piece of legislation.
Thank you. Okay. That's just what I want to know. Because when we, uh, as a council make a stand, we have to be united. And these be, the bills that they are passing, uh, regressive laws to hinder Rocky Mount, not just this bill, but several bills, we should be united on all of them. And that's all I got to say. But I do support the resolution.
Okay, do I have a motion to?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, sir. I can open up for discussion after we've got a motion on the floor, but if you'd like to speak now, please do. I'll recognize you.
I just wanted to say very quickly, I was the one that did not vote for the, um, annexation. But I want to go on record, this is an extreme overreach by the Nash County Board of Directors. And I one hundred percent agree with this resolution. This is the responsibility of the city of Rocky Mount, the other municipalities within Nash County, and Nash County Board of Commissioners did wrong in wanting this amendment adjusted or, or added to this, this bill. And I'm glad, Mr. Mayor, that you fought this and you fought it very hard. Thank you.
It's not over yet, gentlemen, so, but, uh, but I will entertain a motion to, a motion made by Councilman Blackwell?
Second.
I'll give you, I'll recognize you. Go ahead. Okay, well, that's all Blackwell, but I'll give it, you know, Blackwell and Joyner made the motion, seconded by Councilman Daltridge. All right, so I'll, uh, any, any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
So I've,
Councilman Blackwell.
I concur with, um, Councilman Harris, it is an overreach, um, and arrogant overreach from my perspective. And I'm also concerned how, um, a county, uh, feels they have the, um, authority and the right to determine and dictate, um, how we manage our business, especially since that county gets an overwhelming majority of revenue from properties that are within the city limits of Rocky Mount. And we have proven ourselves, um, consistently over decades and decades and decades to be, um, conscientable, uh, stewards. We do a good job in our business. Uh, we heard a presentation today, uh, that, uh, from our, uh, retail developer that Rocky Mount, uh, produces fifty percent of all retail revenue in a four-county region that happens within Nash and Edgcombe Counties, outstripping Wilson, outstripping Halifax. We think, well, we're not in competition necessarily, uh, maybe co-opetition, uh, might be the better word. But, um, we're targeted, and it's not right. And so I, I thank you for, um, doing what you're doing to oppose this. I support heartily, uh, this resolution.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other, um, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. So as you recall, at the beginning of the meeting, we changed, um, the, the order of a few things. So item thirteen is consideration of nine H on the consent agenda. And so it is a request to rescind resolution R dash twenty twenty-one fifty-one entitled, "Resolution Declaring Official Intent of the City of Rocky Mount to Reimburse Expenditures Made for the Construction of Fire Station Number Two." Uh, the project was increased from four point one million dollars to eleven point one million dollars, and resolution declaring official intent of the city to reimburse expenditures made for the construction of Fire Station Number Two. The expected maximum obligation is, uh, eleven point one approved in the annual budget, expected financing and secured installment pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one sixty-eight dash twenty, and the resolution requirement of United States Treasury. So the request is that we rescind the resolution, R twenty twenty-one, and I'll accept a motion at that time to rescind that resolution.
So moved.
Councilman Daltridge, and seconded by Councilman TJ Walker. Is there a need for discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, Councilman, uh, Harris, I'll recognize you, I'll recognize you, Councilman Daltridge.
Okay, um, originally, I, I just want to make it clear, because I read this originally as, as the fire station number two was, um, going to be, uh, eleven point one million dollars, but when we were presented with a four point one million dollar budget. And, um, then it was corrected after I asked some questions. And this is only about where we're going in front of the L G C to ask for funding up to that amount. It does not mean that we're approving the, um, the construction cost to be eleven million dollars. It's only saying we're asking for L G C approval to get, uh, approval for financing. So I want to make that clear to everyone because I was not clear. So, um, I think it could be easily, um, construed, um, the way I was thinking. And so I want to set the record straight, not only for this audience, but the, for the audience that's going to report on this as well.
Councilman Harris?
Uh, yes, uh, Councilman Daltridge, I thank you for your, your, your information you just, uh, indicated to the public. I just want to, uh, the reason why I asked this to be pulled from the agenda, I realized this only going to the L G C. But as we go and do these major construction projects, as I indicated in Durham, as I indicated in one of the budget working sessions, and anything over five hundred thousand dollars to me construction-wise is major. The council needs to be given information quarterly on how these projects are being funded. Are we within budget? Are we going to be under budget? Are we going to be over budget? And one of the ways that we can do our job is if we see that a project is going to come under budget, then we need to know how that excess money, if we approve something of a certain amount, we need to know how any excess monies will be put back into the city coffers. That way, we can have a good idea of excess monies that can perhaps be used for other purposes. We just need to be mindful of how these large construction projects are going to be financed in terms of expectations. I don't think there's any construction project recently that's probably come in under budget. And it's going to be interesting to see going from four million one to eleven million one, I hope the total cost is going to be significantly below eleven one. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Any other conversation or comment? I have a motion on the floor and a second to rescind the resolution, R twenty twenty-one fifty-one, uh, as read before. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. So item fourteen was the consideration of the resolution authorizing the filing of an application for approval of an installment financing contract authorized by North Carolina General Statute one sixty-eight dash twenty for Fire Station Number Two.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman TJ Walker, seconded by, uh, Joy. Motion made by Councilman TJ Walker, seconded by, of course, Councilman Joyner. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item fifteen is item nine D, I read that right? Nine D from the consent agenda. That item is a consideration of a quick claim deed for point zero two-three acre gap between the property line of the Ruby Gray Ayres and the municipal stadium to the Nash Board of Education. The request is that we pass a motion to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the quick claim deed. Is there a motion?
During our, during the public comment, when Mr. Arrington had approached us about the, the deed to the property to the municipal stadium, if we could delay this to our next council meeting and ask our city attorney if he could get their process and through public record, how they conducted the bid process to see if actually that was done correctly and that those gentlemen were not discriminated against. I know it was apples and oranges, but I would just ask the council if we would do right by those gentlemen. And if it's, if we see that has been done, that we would call that to the board attention by writing them an official letter.
Is that a request to table the motion?
Yes.
All right, I have a request to tables, there a second?
Second.
Second made by Councilman Joyner. All in favor, is there a need for discussion to table it?
You can't discuss.
No discussion to table, great, okay. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Item has been tabled. With that, there is no other business to appear before. Hold on, maybe there is.
Thank you. The quick, quick claim deed is just a.
Okay, all right. I need a motion actually to consideration, to, to adopt the new resolution for the financing of the official fire station number two. I thought we had done that, but motion made by Councilman Knight, seconded by Councilman Joyner. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All right, having no other business appear before the city council tonight, I now adjourn the meeting.